Okay, I'd like to call our first work session meeting of 2020 to order. And if we can begin with a reading of the Open Public Meetings Act Statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was sent to the press and the current of Aggie County Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Aggie County Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
Mrs. Berg?
And Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Can we all please stand and salute the flag? Thank you all very much. And before we go to our presentations for tonight, is everybody okay with their seats? Did I get it right? Everybody good? Alright, because we can always make changes there. And so, this is a work session for those who haven't been with us. And basically, we report out on what our committees are doing. We hear presentations from various parts of our administrative team. Sometimes, we hear from our professionals. We discuss and debate what will be voted on at our coming business meeting, which is next Tuesday. So I believe now at this point, we're going to move to two of our presentations, and I will turn it over to Dr. Gruccio.
Good evening, everyone. And this evening, we will continue with our presentations for budgeting reasons, so that the Board can get a feel for different departments in our school district, the plans that the directors and supervisors have that oversee those departments, and just give you update of what's going on currently and needs for the future. So we are going to begin with our athletic director, supervisor of athletics, director of athletics and activities, sorry. Mr. Michael Pellegrino, who's going to share the athletic plan and give you just an update of what's going on in that department. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Good evening. How we doing?
Good evening.
Everybody good?
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you, well. Alright. I'll have a report on basketball. We were up by two with five to go, but we are still playing.
Boys are at home.
Sorry, girls are at home, boys are starting. Alright, so here we go. What I actually do in the athletic department. So give you a general idea of what I'm in control of, what we have at the high school. We have 29 athletic programs at the high school. That's 29 individual sports, of which we have 11 male, 14 female, and four co-ed programs that we offer. Of that, there are 67 levels of teams, meaning varsity, JV, and freshman. Of those 29 sports, we offer 67 levels at the high school. With that being said, there are 69 high school coaches on staff. Some sports having one, some sports having multiple, varsity, JV, freshman, as well as assistants. Participant wise, in the fall of this year, we had 476 student athletes participating in high school sports. Right now during the winter, we have 352 student athletes participating during the winter. And going by last year's spring numbers, you see it's only our biggest season, 480 student athletes participating within the spring. Now, what do they do? So counting our games and scrimmages, in the fall, we ran 205 athletic competitions. During the winter season, we have 238 competitions, and in the spring, as of right now, we have 256 scheduled. So that's including all regular season games, as well as scrimmage conference and non-conference games. I'm also in charge of high school activities and middle school athletics. So, we have 37 high school activities, difference ranging from leadership, competition, as well as service. So, we have 40 activity advisors at the high school, and we have 1,636 participants that are signed up for the activities at the high school. Events that we have, it's tough to get engaged on all of the events, because we have 80 that are actually scheduled within the building, and then 52 that are scheduled off campus. The reason why I say it's difficult is because a lot of our clubs and activities actually are volunteering in the community. They're going to the food bank, we don't count that as an event. They're participating in the walks, the hero walk, and all of those activities that we're going to, that we go support in the community. Middle school athletics, both at Alder and Fernwood, we have 11 sports at each school. Four in the fall, three during the winter, and four again in the spring. We have 12 coaches that are in charge of those 11 sports at each school, and then they roughly average about 100 events per school year between them. And then, that actually entails 700 student athletes. So, of that, basically my responsibility comes in, not just the scheduling, the coordination, transportation officials, also contacts with our schools confirming, as well as all the eligibility for all of those sports and those players. So, what am I doing? So, in terms of our district goals, we start with improved student achievement. We're kind of stepping out of the box this year for the first time, and we're doing literacy for all. My freshman football coach came up with the idea that he wanted to introduce a couple of books into the program for football. One being called The Leadership Manual, and the other called Championship Culture, both by Jeff Jansen. So, the idea basically behind it is, the freshmen are taking excerpts, chapters, and reading them, and then they're having discussions together as a group. So, we're starting with freshman football in a small group, and basically, we're trying to create leaders in our programs, starting with the freshmen in the class first. And then next year, the idea is going to be to develop it from freshmen and sophomore. And basically, talking about all of the, all of the things that you need to do to become leader in your program, and how we build a championship culture at the high school. Like I said, this is our first time we're ever doing something like this, so I'll report back depending upon how things go, and let you know how. But Joe is a tremendous coach, and I think it's really something that they're going to be receptive to. The other thing that we're doing is data collection and tracking. Now, we'll go into a little bit more in just a little bit, but all of our student athletes are recorded for what they're participating in, and what we're able to do with that is, we're able to see how many students are participating every year, if they're continuing to participate every single year, tracking where they are going. I'm a second set of eyes for the guidance department in terms of graduation. So, in checking eligibility, knowing how many they need to graduate, able to also assist in guidance and be able to see which students are falling behind, which ones need help, and which students are actually succeeding very well. Also, in the tracking, we're able to see where are they falling, our student athletes, in terms of how their behavior is in school, and see what they're doing in the classroom, and if there is help and remediation that is needed. One of the things that we started last year that we continue with this year for the second year is Positive Coaching Alliance. It's a national program that basically comes in and helps our coaches. We met them last year. They helped us develop basically culture in our programs. There'll be a little more coming up on that. District goal number two, sport, climate, culture, and EHC pride. As you know, Pride Day started last year was the first time that we had done that. Athletics takes a really big role that day, where we're trying to get every single athletic program to participate, whether playing a game or supporting it in the parking lot, doing some type of activity to promote the program. That also entails all of our activities there as well. If you haven't been there, I know everyone here has been there. It is a tremendous day for us to show off EHC and how proud we are. Thanks to Mr. Santilli. Last year, we started branding. So, after many years of trying to get one eagle for this district, with the support of Mr. Santilli, Dr. Gruccio, and you, we have one eagle now, which is from 28 came one. So, I'm very thankful for your support in that. Now, with the branding, what we're doing is, we're trying to get as much of that into our students and our student athletes' hands. Jumping all the way down to the bottom, we had a whiteout a few weeks ago. We provided all the t-shirts to everyone that was in the gym for them to participate in the whiteout. We have rally towels that we're giving out that are free donated from local vendors, and then also gear. So, we're trying to recognize our student athletes of the month by giving them also gear to promote and with our brand moving forward. The community events, as I stated before, all of our clubs, activities, and sports teams participate in the walks. They volunteer their time at the food bank and other services that they also participate in, volunteer time in the community. A lot of our student athletes participating in Field of Dreams each year, going and supporting them there as well. Positive Coaching Alliance for our culture, they basically come in and they're teaching our coaches how to address the culture and the responsibility. So, this year, last year was just for coaches. This year, we're expanding it to coaches, student athletes, and parents. And that's coming up the spring of this year, where they'll come in and once again discuss the strategies and how we're going to move forward in building a winning culture at Aggie County Township High School. District goal number three, expand community partnerships. Once again, through Pride Day, volunteering the events in the community. Some of our sports teams are running free camps and clinics, where we're putting the information out there that if you have a son or a daughter that would like to come participate, that it is free of charge, that we offer the camps. Other programs do use the camps and clinics as fundraisers for their program, but it's very inexpensive, week long, basically anywhere from $50 to $75 to come participate. And what we're able to do is show off our facility. We're able to have our student athletes participate with the up and coming student athletes, and basically meet and greet face to face, that, you know, show them what we're about here at Aggie County Township High School. The sponsorships and promotions, as I said, we get the free giveaways, and if you notice the scoreboard, updating football, baseball, as well as softball scoreboards. Each of those have sponsors that are up there. And they reach out to us and say, hey, we'd like to get our name up on the board. Yes, it is for a fee, I understand that, but it's also to help promote and build money within our booster clubs. Dr. Charlton Williams with me at the high school, we started this several years ago, where we actually invite the over 55 community. They have eight badges that they get every single year, and they leave them in their office. And basically, when they want to come to an event, they can reach, walk in, grab the badge, and enter any of our events. So, we, you know, we're in their communities while we're running, we're selling things in their community. So, we're trying to bridge the gap with the over 55 community around the high school. They hear our band every single night during the summer, so we try to breach the gap and keep our doors open to keep them involved. What we have done, so this is my second year of my three-year plan. So, what we have accomplished, so in 2018-19, as you know, we started the girls volleyball program, varsity and junior varsity. Last year was our pilot year program for the French club, and our flock took off. It took off alright. So, we monitor the flock now. We have our coaches that are well aware, working with the flock, helping them become good sportsmen at the game, and to support our student athletes. We transitioned to the new logo and the word mark, started Positive Coaching Alliance for the coaches. Thankfully, we were able to purchase a new football and baseball school board. Thank you very much. I can't thank you enough. There's no more disco lights going off during a football game. So, thank you for allowing that to happen. We started cross-country at both middle schools. We were able to install AC and heat in the field house. Now, you may not think that's a big deal, and you may not think we're using that during the time, but outdoor track, winter track, they're out there if it's not below 34 degrees. So, a day like today, they're outside. So, having the ability to utilize the field house will be a great addition when everything finally goes through forever. We were able to add a second weight room to the A Wing Gym upstairs. With the transition of the trainer, Q Lee, going to the back gym, we were able to move all of the fitness equipment and create a second gym upstairs in the A Wing. So, now, during our busiest times during winter, when everybody's doing preseason, and our track, winter track teams with 100-plus student athletes, there's no, there's no room every day after school. So, a lot of our teams now for preseason are utilizing the upstairs weight room. And then, as you know, if you follow along, we launched a media campaign last year, Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook. And to let you know how behind we are sometimes, I actually had to walk to the students in the hallway today and ask them how to do a screen capture, because when you post everything on Instagram, I don't know how to get that picture back. So, I literally walked out, handed the phone to the girls in the hallway, and said, can you help me? Because my kids aren't here right now. So, Steve would have been able to help me, I'm sure, but I had no clue how to do a screenshot, so I learned that today for the first time. Now, some pictures there. There's flock up left-hand corner, new school board bottom left. Signing, we did some signing days back in December. You'll notice behind that, we have a new backdrop, which does have our new brand and logo on there, Jack Rankin's Recruiting Reality, and pictures from volleyball, things that we accomplished last year. Now, where we would like to go? So, right now, we're in the process of collecting data for the track and turf replacements, trying to get pricing for what we need to do to replace the track and the turf. As you know, we had water damage in the past that occurred to the very entrance of the track, and it has been rectified. So, a French drain was put in, thanks to facilities, thank you. And it's done its job. So, the water is no longer running under the track, but the track still needs to be repaired. Last year, the price for just the patch jobs for the two starting lines and the finish line, we were close to $10,000 for just the repairs. So, we know that it's going to be a big undertaking. The entire track basically is looking at being replaced. As far as the turf goes, we are at the end of its lifespan. We know that it needs to be replaced, so we're trying to gather the prices for that. The track and the turf are utilized by every single team. It's not just a football field, it's not just a soccer field, it's not just a lacrosse field. On really nice days, we've had the wrestling team go out and utilize the turf. We've had baseball utilize the turf, softball utilize the turf, in the evening especially after all the other teams are going, when our fields are underwater. So, ah, yes, band is out there, under the lights, phys ed is out there every day during the day. So, the turf and the track, it's 24/7, six days a week, basically. We have people on there. And then, we're also looking at investing in the possibility of adding additional grass fields back in the D-Wing parking lot. We have the large space out there, we do the bonfire every year. This will provide the fields that we currently have rest. So, allowing the teams to practice in a different area, get them off of their playing surfaces, and let the grass grow, and trying to do some type of rotation. Right now, every team has its own field, and they're basically being overused. Facilities, once again, have done a tremendous job in keeping them up and running, but we really could use the additional fields to support the athletic program. Another thing that we've talked about investigating is doing storage under the home bleachers. This would take some of the unsightly storage containers, as well as the sheds off of campus, and allow us the ability to have one central area outside for all of our teams to utilize to store their materials outside. For 2021, looking at proposal for replacing the fencing on campus. We have the white fencing along the high school walkway, that has run its course as well. That was here before I got here 11 years ago. And it's basically, it's starting to dry rot, and we're just looking to do some upgrades in terms of making it look nicer when everybody walks down onto the campus. And hopefully, the ability to add the additional fields in here. In 2021, replacing the track and turf surface, and then looking at that year to explore expanding the field house. As I said, with the lifting in the weight room, during the summer, when the building's closed on Fridays, or Saturdays, or Sundays, this would allow some of the teams, if we had an exterior building, where they had the ability to go with their teams and work out. This may be a pipe dream of mine, I understand that. You know, but looking at some type of facility along the lines of what St. Augustine may have, and allowing the student athletes to come and see what the campus is actually could be. So, expanding the weight room with an outside, expanding the field with an outside weight room is would be a great addition for the athletic department. And then, talking with the coaches as well, looking at the possibility of turfing the infield for both baseball and softball. As you know, the spring is the worst season of the year. Last year, as well as two years ago during the playoffs run, we were playing actually in Atlantic City on the turf, because our fields were underwater. We moved so many games because of, and there's nothing you can do, when the rain hits, it hits. So, looking at the ability to possibly turf the baseball and softball fields. Beyond 2021, if we're able to build the lighting, or build the fields out in the D-Wing, we would look to possibly install lighting for the grass fields that were out there, and then add possible additional tennis courts on the high school campus. Now, they don't just have to be tennis courts, they could also be pickleball courts as well, which would open up the doors once again into the community. Because right now, pickleball has taken off, so you would utilize the courts basically outside of our campus, in the D-Wing parking lot area, to once again welcome the community onto our campus. And then, after that all occurs, looking at adding a second field house out there, which would have locker rooms as well as restrooms for that area. So, again, big plans for facility, and hopefully comes to fruition one day with your support. Personnel moving forward and programs for 1920. The French club became official this year. We're starting the esports program this year, which will become an actual club next year. Esports is e-gaming. If you follow along, it's a billion-dollar business. The students are obviously really into the gaming portion of it. We were able to start the assistant athletic trainer this year for assistance with Q Lee. As you know, again, with the sports, we have over 1,200 student athletes that are competing throughout the year, so the assistance air was needed for the athletic trainer. We start the environmental club this year, and then we're doing data collection for the Unified Sports Program. Unified Sports Program is run through the NJSIAA in conjunction with Special Olympics. This is a program that is its own independent sporting program. Soccer, basketball, bowling, track, where basically, students with and without disabilities compete together. They compete together on the same team, and they compete against other schools. Mainland Regional, Cedar Creek, Oak Press, local schools have started this, and we're looking to model the program after what they've done. It's a tremendous program for our students, not just, like I said, with disabilities, but students without as well. And then, received a proposal next year, freshman girls volleyball to expand it to a third team, and to start a boys volleyball program at the high school for varsity and JV. In 2021, year after, investigate the possibility of starting a cooperative program for ice hockey with Mainland Regional. And the reason why I'm picking Mainland Regional is because, one, we already run a club team together, and it is the most convenient school probably in the area where our student athletes already are competing with them on the club level. The NJSA just lifted the rule that says co-ops could only be group one and group two. So, now, as a group four school and a group three school, they've opened the door to allow this to happen, where it would be a shared expense between the two schools to start a ice hockey program. And then, we're trying to track our numbers for girls bowling and girls golf. I know our coaches are really pushing for the numbers. Bowling, we're running an independent team of girls when we get to the state level this year, and golf, we've had anywhere from three to five girls increase every single year. So, we are getting the numbers, so eventually the proposal will be coming to start their own programs. And then, once again, in 2021, start unifying, start the Unified Sports Program. Academics and professional development, 1920 this year, we had Jack Rankin, the National Recruiter, come in, speak to our student athletes and parents with regard of how you get to college, that it is a game, know the rules of the game. You're able to find a school that you're able to compete at, and they will give you money. You just have to know how to do it. And that's what Jack's all about. He came, spoke with us about five years ago, and came again this past fall. Coming up, we have Positive Coaching Alliance in the spring. We also have the NCAA coming in for a presentation in the spring with our coaches and counselors, talking about, once again, NCAA, and sports, and athletics, and scholarships. The book study that's going on, and I'm calling it the Student-Athlete Leadership Team. The SALT Team is what I'm going to cut it down to. So, the idea is to create the Student-Athlete Leadership Team. Each year, as we build it, we're going to incorporate another class to come in. So, eventually, it'll be one full group representing to the grade lines. One of the things, a personal goal of mine, is for our coaches to be introduced to the National Coach Certification Courses. These are online courses offered through the National Federation of High School Sports. They are free of charge. Right now, coaches have to take three courses every year to maintain coaching ability. This is going to require them to take two additional courses. When they take the two additional courses, one being sports-specific, and one being leadership, they basically would become an accredited interscholastic coach. If they take four courses, then they become a certified interscholastic coach, basically showing that our coaches are doing the job, doing the work that they need to keep progressing forward in their sports. And then, as we discussed previously, the data collection, athletics and activities, where we're following the progress of our students academically, and then also their behavior and their participation. A few years ago, if you remember, I presented with freshmen, and talking about how many freshmen enrolled in the program freshman year, and where they were by their senior year. That's one of the tools that we're able to follow, is where are our student athletes going? Why are they dropping out? What do we need to do to maintain them in the programs? So, that's one of the things we're able to use with the data collection. In 2021, next year, we're already starting to put together the presentation with Atlantic Care, where they would come in and they discuss the nutrition, as well as the maintenance of the body for our student athletes. And they came in, nurses, doctors, basically presentation on how you maintain yourself as a student athlete. Expanding Student-Athlete Leadership Team, and then the coaches are going to be asked to begin their certification process in that year. And then, here are some pictures from bowling, left corner, soccer this year, Dr. Gruccio presentation, the eagle who's been on campus left and right, and basically, that is Positive Coaching Alliance there as well. So, thank you very much for everything that you do. I always appreciate the support. It's always great to be here normally representing our student athletes and presenting things to our student athletes, but tonight, it's all just about me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pellegrino, very much for your presentation. And, is that me? My goodness. And all the wonderful work that you do.
No, I have something, will you get that?
And, you know, we talk quite often about our mission, and our co-, and how our co-curricular activities turn around and enhance our curricular activities. They work hand in glove with each other, and we, so we appreciate all that you do, and obviously, what you do for our students. Our students appreciate it, and for your presentation tonight. So, thank you again.
Real quick, as I was on, I also would like to personally thank you, because I know last time you was here and you spoke, you kind of, you kind of got beat up a little bit. But I just want everybody to know, who don't know, how hard you work. You can go to eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night, and he's still there. He's at every event, indoors, outdoors, and all, and you try to pull the program together. And I want to say this, and also for Mr. Barrett, if you've been around, like, schools and know facilities directors, we have the best, and athletic director. Now, you said Mr. Santilli had my tickets.
So, I just want to say, I really enjoyed the presentation and the, having the plan in place. And you dream big, and that's great. Expensive, but that's what you, if they ask you what you want to do, you always put out as much as you can. But I just wanted to say that one of the pieces that stuck out to me was, you used to call it the SALT Team. I think it's phenomenal that you're incorporating leadership skills in student athletes. And I just was wondering, how are you going to, like, monitor the students? I know you track them, but like, as far as with the book that they're reading, like, so do they have to read it, come together? It's kind of like a book club. I know, when you think of student athletes in a book club, it's kind of like, oh, I'm worried a book club. But, I think that so many students may look up to student athletes, and for them to set the right example in the school could, you know, help with any given thing, you know, in a school. But I just wanted to say, how are we going to track them? And do the, do the student athletes visit the middle schools and talk to the middle school students about coming to the high school, what it means to be a student athlete, just kind of put in that, give them someone that's their peer? Because I just know when older kids come and talk to young kids, they're like magic, you know, they're like a hero. So, I just was thinking about that, and I've really... So I just was thinking about that, and I'm really excited about hearing about the Positive Coaching, what did you call it? Positive Coaching Alliance. I think that's key, that's super key important, because as the adults, they have to serve as role models to the children, so their behavior and their interaction with them is very important, and students are very impressionable. So that's just what I wanted to ask about how we're going to track.
So the, so one, we host every single one of our middle schools at the high school. So we always have all diverse families on campus. One of the games, normally the last game of the season, where during soccer season, when we have them up here, we buy pizzas. So after the game is over, our high school athletes are there for them, talking to them during and after the game. We do that with basketball, we do it with baseball, we do it with softball. So our student athletes, they get the opportunity to play on our campuses, eighth graders, and they get to meet our high school student athletes at that time. Also, you can find that most of our student athletes that are in seventh and eighth grade are attending our camps and clinics. They are the same student athletes that are going to be playing for us in the high school. So the high school is always trying to contact the middle schools and keep in contact with them. The coaches go down when they're doing the preseason meetings, they meet with the eighth grade, the eighth graders during the lunchtime, and discuss what they need to do to become a high school member of their team. As far as the SALT Team goes, basically, it's going to be like once a month, we'll get together, so it'll be several coaches, and it'll be the student athletes basically, and discussing and saying, okay, this is what you read, here's the chapter that we read, what did you take from it? What did you get? What did you, what are we going to do? How can we cause a ripple effect with this idea so that everyone on the team? Being a leader, you know, in athletics, isn't I'm the boss, you're going to run, it's leading by example. But basically teaching our student athletes how to lead by example for the rest of the team to follow. Someone's going to speak up if someone's doing something wrong, and not turning their back, not pulling out a cellphone and recording it because they think it's funny, and then posting it. It's really about meeting with the student athletes and discussing the right and wrong way to be a team leader. So we would meet once a month with them, that, this is the, the initial plan is to meet with them once a month, with the coaches and the student athletes during the day, bring them in for lunch, buy some pizzas, sit around, and basically talk about what they read and what they learned from the book that week. And then basically give them another assignment for the following week. Doesn't have to be the entire book, just excerpt. And then also ask them, what is out there that you have read? What is out there that you've seen? And maybe taking some readings that they have also done, and utilizing them, something that they may have been more interested in, and basically using that as a tool to keep the students involved.
Make them bring an article or something that they like.
They want to get homework.
They need to, to hold them accountable that they really are participating in it. Sometimes when you write it down, it sticks.
Anyone else?
Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to know how old the turf, the current turf is.
So we opened the turf in 2009, which was Thanksgiving Day games, the first game we played on the turf. So it has been here as long as I have now. So we're in its eleventh year, basically.
Is turf, is that what most high schools in the area have now?
In terms of turf? Yes, well, so in our direct area now, you have Ocean City with the turf field, Pleasantville has a turf field, St. Augustine, Vineland, Atlantic City has, I think, six turf fields in Atlantic City. You have Bridgeton just started within the past few years. Almost every school in the area has transitioned the turf, and it's basically because of what it enables for the rest of the campus to develop and grow. It really takes the weather out of, out of the equation.
Got it. I have two more questions, sorry. I think that, yeah, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, there was a room that was dedicated in the high school for meetings with NCAA representatives, something like that? Am I right? Coaches? Is that? I wanted to know how that's working out.
An actual room that was?
Wasn't it a room?
I don't think we've ever?
Yeah, right? There was a room that was dedicated? Yeah, I wanted to know. Is it good use?
Clarification, just because it came from the finance committee, it was a room we were trying to convert for coaches to have meetings with colleges and recruiters or any entity, not specifically NCAA, but the high school ended up using, I believe, the principal's conference room or some other space instead of developing another room.
Oh, I thought, yeah, I thought funds were used for that. So that was my follow-up, if it's increased anything. And my last question, what percentage of our student athletes fall below the academic standards to participate? Because I'm thinking of along lines of what Ms. Gilbert Floyd said, maybe if we have, you know, say 10%, they could have a mentorship with more successful older athletes to help them, and that would piggyback with the leadership component that you're teaching.
So coming off of how eligibility works, so in the fall, it goes by last year's final transcript. So coming into this year, writing the numbers, we had 68 out of 2,400 students that were not eligible to participate. So it's not even knowing if they were going to participate in athletics or not, I can't give you a percentage on, but we only had 68 students that were below 30 credits that could not participate this year across the 2,400 students in the high school. So now, once the rosters start coming in, then I'm able to cross-check which student athletes turned in a physical, and what they would like to participate in. So in terms of this year, we only had two student athletes that were ineligible to participate during the winter, out of once again, 400, and so we're talking less than 1% you know, of students that are not able to participate, which was a great. So it's not as much an academic issue in tracking, it's really just having another layer to help and support, you know, being another set of eyes, having to check eligibility every semester, as well as intervals, to keep them eligible, keep them on the teams, and able to reach out to the counselors, myself, reach out to Miss Elgo, and be able to say, hey, what are we doing? What do we need to do? How can we help? So that's really been the idea. Again, it's been great, but the numbers are not really holding that qual of participation.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Palagreeno.
Okay, next in line are Director of Facilities, Mr. Tim Brunetta.
Good evening, everyone. I was trying to pick a spot that I could speak to everyone, it has been kind of impossible enough on my back as well. I'm here tonight, obviously, to propose my three to five-year plan, vision if you will, where I would like to see the facilities department go. There's a lot of wheels, a large umbrella under which things fall in facilities, so I would try and be as brief as I can, but at the same time be as informative as I can. But now, see if you have questions, feel free to shout out. First, a little bit about my department. Currently is comprised of 113 employees, three supervisors, myself included, two secretaries, 80 full-time custodians, nine maintenance men, seven groundsmen, and 12 substitute custodians. And important to note that the number of my maintenance men are licensed, actually HVAC and plumbing contractors as well. That helps us out a lot. And if I can just go off script a bit, whenever I get the opportunity, I like to say this, but it's true and it needs to be repeated, is I've had the privilege of working three school districts in my career. I've never worked with more professional and expert people than are here in the H-T. You should be proud of it, because I am. These folks are responsible for maintaining and cleaning ten school buildings. That alone is 1.3 million square feet of space. That does not include our facilities and grounds building, or transportation building, or registration building, central reg. And I've listed the schools here so you can see them, the year they were constructed, and when any kind of a, an addition was put on, but pay close attention to some of those numbers. Some of these buildings are very old, which of course complicates things when it comes to maintaining them and keeping them up. I just wanted you to take a peek at that. Some basic facts, and this is from our last full school year, my staff completed 7,800 work orders, 4,200 of them were submitted by staff. So I'm a teacher in a classroom, my light doesn't work, the switch broke, a pipe is leaking, things of that nature, where they entered a work order and we reacted to it and resolved the problem. 3,500 were preventative maintenance. I'm very heavy on preventative maintenance, because in my view, it is the only way to get the best life out of the equipment, which we're going to be talking a lot about later, to get the best life out of those pieces of equipment, because they are very expensive. My office also handles all use of facilities requests. In-house, obviously, things that go on, school-related, 3,200 we processed in that young year, and we had 1,100, almost 1,200 of outside organizations. So we had 1,200 events of outside groups who came in and rented our space, and that's all coordinated through my office. And as a little highlight, I wanted to throw this in here, my folks doing work outside of what really is their typical job, doing projects that were typically handled by outside contractors, in that year saved the district a half a million dollars by doing stuff in-house, where we didn't have to pay other people to do it. Just thought that'd be good to throw in there. Okay, now, a three to five-year plan is, for lack of a better word, it's a, you know, it's a vision, it's a, it's a journey, right? Well, the first step to any journey is the first step, which of course is this year's budget, which is a big deal. So I wanted to share with you the things that I consider, and that I go over in preparing my budget, just so you understand where I'm coming from, because soon you're going to be seeing, obviously, very detailed, very in-depth stuff when it comes to budgets, but I want you to know where it comes from in my vision of what I want for facilities. So basically, I've broken it down into these eight categories, I'll read each one of them with you, and explain how I arrived at where I'm going. First one is fixed, these are costs, and that's actually a shot of my budget there underneath there, but these are costs that are things we can't avoid. They're the things that are state inspections, any repairs that have to be carried out as a result of those inspections. You can see on their elevators, lifts, nurse scale registry, all kinds of crazy things, but also things that are, things that outside contractors have to do for us, macing repairs, electrical repairs. Again, these are things above and beyond what we can do in-house. Also included in this section of my budget is materials costs, ceiling tiles, pipe, things of that nature. Now, when you look at these numbers, when you ultimately see my budget, I want you to understand something. These are real numbers. They're big numbers when you look at them, but they're real numbers, where I've actually trended over the last two years, and I've tracked exactly what we have spent in each of these areas, and basically what my proposals for this year, I just added 2.5% for cost of living increase. So it's based on real numbers, there's no puff, there's no fat, it's what you see is what you get, and it's basically what has cost us to operate for the last couple of years. The next section is what I call is building level. These are basically specific project requests. Principals ask for things to be done to their buildings where they're having problems, or they want improvements or whatnot, or things that I find, or my department finds, that we want to repair or upgrade. And I have a few examples here, just so you can see where I'm going with this. Now, every school has a list, when you get my budget in the end, every school's going to have a big list of projects, okay? But I just threw a few up here for you to see what I'm talking about. So here at high school, we have a problem at the high school, don't know if you're aware of this or not, but the picture to the left is actually our field hockey fields. You can look very closely at that image, it's a little hard to see, but do you see the discoloration and that patchiness that's going on? We have an issue with a weed, a sedge weed called Kalinga, that's been invading there for about eight years, and it's slowly taking over the fields. And the problem is, if it's left untouched, the photo to the right is what it will turn into. Now, it's been going on for quite a while, the thing is quite large, it's moving, but I'm recommending that we replace that side on that field. It's very difficult to get rid of, it's a very, very deep-rooted growth system, so the most immediate and quickest way to resolve it is to literally cut it off and put down new stuff over that area. Paint the gymnasium ceiling, I think the picture speaks for itself. If you've been in there, you can see there's many spots where it's just peeling all over the place, needs to be painted. At both Alder and Fernwood, both of their fire alarm systems are at end of life, and when I mean end of life, I mean done. There are Simplex panels, there are Simplex alarms, Simplex does not even support them anymore. Just recently, we had the Fernwood system go down, and if Simplex couldn't scavenge parts from one of the casinos, because they, in the past, had a system similar, Fernwood system would have been done, we wouldn't even be able to operate the building because we wouldn't have a fire alarm. Both of these panels, both of these systems are in the same state, they're done, not even supported by Simplex. Davenport L. and Slaver Primary, we had an audit performed last year by a company called Open Systems, and they basically looked at our equipment, and they said, where is this stuff in terms of life cycle? Both of these systems, with the PA systems in these two schools, done, end of life. Can't buy parts for them anymore, they need to be replaced. Davenport Elementary, again, pictures speak for themselves, the laminating doors, they're clearly the original doors that were on these classrooms in the building, but they're really bad. One, can't clean them properly, it's wood, it's raw wood. Two, they're splinter hazards, the children or whatnot. And three, the fire rating is gone. These are fire doors, they're specter part of the building's fire system, they no longer hold their fire cert. Swift, and I know this is a sore subject for a few people, there are still six classrooms in Swift that still have single-pane windows. Now, we replaced the rest of the building, some years back, I'm told, but there are still six classrooms that have them, and they're terrible energy consumers, and they, it's just the temperature in the classrooms, and it gets really cold, you can just talk to the kids, it's very difficult to maintain the temperature in the room. Transportation, back of their bus yard, I'm proposing to grade and pave this area. You can see, obviously, from the photo on the left, this is not only trip pad in these kind of conditions, but in the winter, it's even worse. You get those areas filled in, it's ice, it's snow, it's difficult for the drivers, people get hurt, workers' comp claims, things of that nature. And right in that same area, the picture to the right, there's actually drains in the dirt. So when you get big, heavy rains and washout, it's filling into those drains, which is ultimately a problem down the road, because those pipes are going to start filling up with dirt, and now you have a bigger problem. Okay, the next section I consider is equipment. Now, basically, this is our vans, our trucks, our saws, our screwdrivers, all those kinds of things. Try to imagine, I'll go to the next slide to say this, you have a spreadsheet, 281 pieces of equipment, we're talking about vehicles and things of that nature, okay? I looked at each of them, looked at what their typical life cycle would be, and then I saw where they are today, and I plugged it into a 25-year plan, to say that I want to replace this stuff on a regular basis, so that it's, we're getting its useful life, and then we're replacing it and getting new. Basically, what you see at the top of the screen is, is that's the spending trend. So basically, you're going to see it's kind of predictable. You get peaks every so many years, which will allow us to plan properly as we move forward, and the bottom is within the next five years. That's the spending that would need to take place along with that plan if we follow replacing things as they need to be replaced. And it says down the bottom, everything in orange, greater than $250,000 in a given year, anything in aqua, I guess it looks blue on this screen, it's under $250,000 in a year to replace those pieces of equipment. Now HVAC, this is a really big area of concern for me, and I think maybe when I share the next couple of slides, you may realize yourselves that it is. Right now, in the district, you have 662 pieces of large HVAC equipment. Now, it could be something the size of this table, or it could be something the size of a tractor-trailer box, they literally are that diverse in their size. Typically, if they're maintained well, which we do, I pushed that out earlier about preventative maintenance or whatnot, you will get 20, 25 years out of one of these pieces of equipment. Here's our problem. Right now, 31% of those are over 20 years old. 206 pieces of equipment are over 20 years old. 379 pieces are 17 to 19. So you talk about immediate needs, we're talking about we need to address that 206, but you know that's not going to happen in a year or two. So by the time we do address that, the others over here, the 379, are next up, and that's a huge number of pieces of equipment. So I've been working closely with Chandra in the business office to try to figure out how we can develop some kind of a replacement plan to get this going, but this potentially is a lot of money. Now, I can't speak for people before me, don't know why it wasn't planned before, but we've got to get some kind of a roadmap together, and some kind of a plan together to begin replacing this stuff down. Otherwise, we're at the point of failure. You know, it's like you buy your refrigerator, and it's warranted for three years, and what happens three years and two months later? It's when it fails. This stuff is engineered to last a certain time, and then it just starts to fail. You can try and replace parts, you can try and nurse it, you can try and push it a little further, but it's just like that van. Yes, I can replace the transmission, I can replace the engine, but when the body's rotten, rusting out, and the frame is falling apart, at some point, it's just, you can't keep it going any longer. And that's where we are, at least with those 206 right now. Okay, roofing. 1.3 million square feet of schools, we have just about that much square feet of roofing. So again, it's a situation where we need to plan some kind of a replacement process so that we're just nibbling little by little every year, it becomes a manageable number, and we're always on top of where things are, and we're keeping things dry. Which is, of course, good for health reasons. What I did for each school was, is I basically took a roof image of each school, broke it down into a manageable section, based on my experience of what a typical roof replacement section would be. Figured out that square footage, figured out if that was a flat roof, figured out figured out if that was a pitch roof with conventional shingles or whatnot, developed pricing for each of those options, and basically laid it across a twenty-five-year plan. There's about thirty-five roof sections, based on my estimation. So in that, you lay across a twenty-five-year replacement schedule, that's the spending trend, which ends up being near-average through. It is a little higher sometimes, a little lower sometimes. But it would allow us to replace it in a manageable chunk every year. And of course, when we're done, we start over, and we go back to it again. This is based upon two products. One product is EPDM, which is basically a rubber roof system. But it's very easy to put down. It is the longest-lasting roof system available today commercially. So because of the labor cost being reduced, it's the most affordable and lasts the longest. This is based on that. And then for conventional roofs, you have metal here, like at the primaries. We have regular conventional shingles. It's based on a thirty-year shingle. It never lasts as long as they say. So we'll hope to get twenty-five years out of those, but that's what this is based on. Concrete and asphalt, two things I looked at here. One is actual projects where we find there's a need, and the other is just regular maintenance. So an example of a project would be, here at the high school, behind the back of the high school in the loading dock area, there's that dirt road that's been created by truck transport. People come in to deliver all kinds of products and whatnot. It's created, one, it's a hazard to walk on, it's a trip hazard. Two, it's terrible in the wintertime when the freezing snow and ice are on there. And again, it's an issue where we have drains nearby, dirt washes into the drains. So this would be an example of a proposed project to pave an area to try and prevent those things. And then here, just regular maintenance, these things pop up all the time. It's very difficult to try and project where this is going to occur, or how many square feet we need to replace and things of that nature. But last year, I forget how many projects we had where suddenly we started getting workers' comp claims, people were tripping, sidewalk sunk here, something failed here, something hit here. So another part of the machinations ago in my mind are just planning for repairing those concrete problems, as well as when there's asphalt problems, potholes, alligator fracture, things of that nature. Signing stripes is pretty straightforward. We have ten campuses, really. Striping typically lasts ten years before it needs to be redone. Basically, do a school a year. Just re-straight the parking lot every year, and move on to the next year, to the next one, and move across. Same with roadside signage. A lot of them need to be replaced now, actually. And that would go hand-in-hand with the new branding we're doing. But basically, just, as you'll see in my budget, just basically a replacement schedule based on ten years to do those few things. Now, to follow up on what Mr. Pellegrino was talking about, track and field repairs and improvements by school athletics. Our immediate needs, as he explained, is absolutely the track and the turf. Now, we've gotten numbers, one-point-five-million from our architect as a ballpark estimate, budgetary number, to replace both of those surfaces. We're working on the scope, it's being developed with the architect to see if this could take place between April and August to get that done. Now, that is contingent upon the fact that we are doing borings. We're doing core drilling to make sure that the subsurface under the track and the field is still in good condition so that it only is just a surface replacement. And if that's the case, it would be approximately one-point-five-million. And a little note on, again, on Mr. Pellegrino's conversation. Every year, we're required to do what's called a G-Max test on the turf. Now, basically, what that is, is a company comes out and is certified, and they actually do a compression test of the rubber pellets, the rubber pellets that are in the, and they give a rating of where it is in its life. We are at the end. We are at the end. We just, the language used in the report was, "We just passed." So it needs to be done, where a place needs to be done. A question was asked about its life, and who else has it? There's actually, and of course, the turf companies will sell this to you because it helps them sell their product. But the truth is, is that when you look at the average life of a turf field, typically twelve to fifteen years. And you look at what it is to pave the turf, put it in and install it, big upfront number. As opposed to having a grass field and the maintenance and the chemicals. And it actually costs more to have a grass field than a turf field over the same number of years. Because of the labor, you know, of course, with employees comes the benefits and everything else. You add all those costs together, it's actually cheaper to have a turf field. And of course, this is big-picture thinking. Mike mentioned this as well. This is off of the D Wing side lot, this is the high school we're looking at. There's enough room on that right-hand side when the bonfire goes on, we could actually fit five more soccer fields there. Now, I use soccer fields as a dimension because that's the largest, outside of baseball, of the largest area needed for a sport. So you could have lacrosse, you could have field hockey, you could have whatever. And as Mike said, it's one of those things where we have such a difficult time maintaining our regular fields because they don't ever get a break. So as soon as one sport is done, then the field's laid across this way, and the PE class is on top of it, that it's very difficult to keep that grass alive. Whereas if this was the case, they could become practice fields, giving their fields time to rest. The idea was even floated about possibly offering this up or having some kind of an agreement with the township that they can use the fields, and it could be a thing where, you know, it could be useful for everyone to get buy-in from the community. So this is that area, this image Mike showed you before. The idea here is, again, it's about field use. This is the concept, long-term, of using every square inch we have to get the maximum out of what's available to us. And basically, what this is showing is, is repositioning each of the fields that we can actually fit in just about every field, that everybody's got a dedicated area. So obviously, one, it answers the questions about giving the field areas rest time, time to recover, time to come back, get the grass going again. It also is, and you're a student athlete, this is your field. There's buy-in. This is our area. We keep it nice, we keep it clean. This is ours, and we take care of our area. It's all part of promoting that as well. But again, these are long-term things. There's issues with drainage that need to be addressed, that are indicated here. The suggestion of possibly additional restrooms out of walkway near baseball, because it is such a far walk now from the baseball fields all the way back to the fieldhouse of the building. Grading the whole area to properly capture all that water that causes all the problems at the track. Mike is correct in the sense that we did put a drain in last year, and it seems to have helped the issue. You can actually see on the photograph, right at the base of the track where you walk in, you see that brown ring? That's the staining from all that dirt from the field washed in and actually stained the track where it did all the damage. Now, we've controlled that to a certain degree, but properly, those fields should all be graded to the center. You could put them into a true sewer, and you could really get rid of that water. And you would never run the risk of damaging the track surface again. And that's it. Yes?
I just want to say that we've worked with you pretty closely. And the reason that Tim is able to cut back on his budget so much is because of all the certifications he has. It's really been a blessing to our district because he has brought so much of our cost back in to our employees rather than doing it in-house. So I have to commend you, Tim. You've done a fantastic job.
Thank you. Wherever we can, listen, we have the talent. You have, I'm telling you, you have great people here, talented, skilled people here. So when we can do it ourselves, we do it ourselves.
I want to thank you very much, Mr. Brunetta, for your excellent presentation and for laying the foundation for our budget deliberations that are going to be coming up. One of the most telling slides for me is where we listed the age of the school buildings. We have aging buildings in this school district. In order for learning to take place, we need to have safe, healthy buildings. And grounds as well for our co-curricular, but, you know, in terms of parking lots, what have you. We have got to be investing more in our capital facilities because there are a lot of needs. And so that's something that, you know, we're going to have to deal with at our budget time. There's no getting around it. There's no getting around a roof, an air conditioner, heating, et cetera. It has to be right. Windows, doors, floors, et cetera.
If I can add one little thing, you'll actually say in the more detailed, fine budget, that there's actually pieces of HVAC equipment we have that have been installed since 1975.
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Brunetta.
Yes, I'm going to try to go in order.
I was going to say, it's very refreshing to see the information presented in this manner so we can get a real idea of what we're working with. And I work in a building that's forty-six-years-old, a school. So I will say, facilities are very important, and it's in good shape. But a lot of the buildings in the township are somewhat younger. But I think the keeping up with the required maintenance is key to maintaining, like I said, a healthy and safe environment for the students. But I saw, so I saw the, and maybe I was wrong, but I saw the presentation from the athletic director included turf. Is that, oh, you, working together, that's what I was going to say, so?
Same thing. Mr. Pellegrino really was coming from the approach of curriculum.
Okay.
Where I was coming from the approach of facilities.
But you both went the same thing.
Exactly.
To replace the turf.
The basis for which we're saying, the track and the field specifically need to be addressed very soon. They're at the end of their life, end of their useful life.
Mr. President, Mike, thank you. Mr. Brunetta, when we talk about the signs and stripes in the parking lots that need to be maintained, do we do that in-house, or do we have to contract that out to have that done?
We do a little bit. It really depends on how large the scope is. If there's little repairs, or small areas that are fading, our grounds guys, we do have a paint machine that can do it. It's not quite as clean and crisp. But if it's something we're just patching temporarily, we can let it in-house. But normally, when it's something larger, when it's a whole area, or like we just started doing with the student drop-offs, where we have those loops in front of each of the buildings, that's much more detailed than it has to be. We have an outside contractor.
Okay.
It's something we could do in-house, if we had different pieces of equipment.
Okay.
But the larger, I think the overall larger costs aren't tremendous, but it could be handled in-house.
Okay, so that's something to consider. Also, one quick question. When we talk about different schools, which schools in particular are in need of roof repair right now? All of them, or is there any specifically that are in a priority, or?
There are priorities. The one we're in right now has an area that's of great concern to me. The elementary, Slave Bar Elementary, Davenport Elementary have very specific issues. I'd be concerned about those. If, as we develop a plan, if we're going to go forward with this kind of replacement, we certainly put the oldest things first. But that's not necessarily where we do have the problems. So it's going to be a thing where it's kind of going to be a living document, for lack of a better explanation, where we will start on a certain path, but we find something begins to fail sooner. We may need to switch areas from year to year, kind of a thing, and kind of keep on it. But there are certain areas that need to be addressed right away. Like I said, specifically here is one bad area in the back of the cafeteria.
Okay, thank you very much.
When we put the solar on the buildings, where it was, how old were the roofs? Do you know?
Oh, boy, I couldn't tell you.
I mean, they weren't really in bad shape where the solar went, right?
I think it depends what solar array you're talking about and what location. Really, where a lot of the solar is going up, it's been put on what's called dunage, which is basically, it's elevated. It's elevated, it's on a diagonal, and it really doesn't affect the roof surface too much. However, some of the earlier projects, the style that was used then, where they're actually these sleds, these physical little sleds, and they actually sit right on the roof surface. So when we have roof problems, that's what I mentioned, Slave Bar Elementary, we have the problems, it's almost impossible to find out where the problem starts. We've got to remove solar arrays, we've got to search and try and find and see if it worked or didn't work. If we're lucky enough to fix something, and then it's reassembled the stuff back, that's all additional cost to that process.
I just didn't know if the solar was helping or hindering where it needed to be replaced.
I do not think that the solar is advancing the deterioration of the roof. However, when there's a problem with the roof, it could be a compounding factor in getting it repaired.
Christie.
Thank you. Where is the, where are we with the budget for our elementary school playgrounds? For upkeeping our playgrounds?
Well, for the elementary schools specifically?
Any, yeah, where we have our playgrounds for students.
Most of the playgrounds we have, the actual equipment is relatively new. In fact, since I've been here, they've been out a couple of times. The companies that perform the installs actually get notices from the factory. They come out and they test whether there could be potential hazards and stuff. And they come out with devices to check to make sure openings are large enough, you know, chains and things are still in their proper condition, things of that nature. But they're new enough that we really don't have issues with the actual equipment itself. What we do every year is maintain the mulch to fall later. So we have to use what's called a certified playground mulch, only buy it from certain people. And it's got to be filled to an appropriate depth, and that's pretty much our general maintenance as of this point. I'm really unaware of any very specific problems with regard to the equipment itself. We had a problem at Davenport Elementary, but that company came back in and had to correct all the footings and things, or put it improperly at first, but that happened last summer. But other than that, I'm not aware of any issues.
I just have a follow-up with the playgrounds. Our special education population has grown so greatly over the last ten years, I would say, in the district. Are our playgrounds in line with our special education population so that our playgrounds can be utilized by all of our students?
Blake?
Go ahead.
Mr. Brunetta's in the facilities world. If it's proposed from the curricular area to him, he would get the numbers and put in the budget, and his whole budget will be presented shortly. But it's not going to be his decision about expanding for special. It'll be more, I believe, in the other side of the house.
Thank you. My question, though, is, are our playgrounds right now set up for special education students? Not really curricular in nature, more?
The only one that I'm aware of is Davenport Primary has a playground on the backside that is for special needs. The other playgrounds are built to the standard for typical child and accessibility and the devices that they can use and climb on and things of that nature.
Thank you. I would like to see in the budget this year or next year some accountability for students who may be in wheelchairs that want to participate outside, and having walkways more accessible for all of our students, not just typical students.
I'm glad you actually brought that up. Just this past summer, we did install walkways at both Slave Bar Elementary and at Swift to allow wheelchair access to those playgrounds and a pad where a wheelchair-bound student could at least be and engage and be with the other children. They couldn't actually access the equipment. It's not designed for them. But in terms of accessing the playground itself, we did add a couple of those last year.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted, I guess maybe for Ms. Anaya, I just wanted to know, as far as the, like, the required maintenance, is it allocated by each school, or is it housed? Like, do you just, where needed, or is each school given a required maintenance line that you use?
Every school gets a required maintenance line. A few budget meetings ago, excuse me, a few board meetings ago, you approved a comprehensive maintenance plan, which listed the items that have to be comprehensively maintained. And then with the budget by-school line item, you'll see where some are heavier than others. We've done one, we've done a specific identification by-school. And then we've also done, hey, just as a general electrical budget, we allocate by-square footage, just because we're not sure quite yet what's going to pop up. So it's a blended model by-school of a base, if you will, and then allocated of something specifically identified by-school. So when you see the detail lines, it'll be someone has the same, someone has more.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anyone see none?
Okay, that was, thank you, Mr. Brunetta. Excellent job. Thank you, Mr. Pellegrino. Excellent job. I just want to remind the board and the public, this is part of our strategic budgeting process. And if you've been following this process throughout the fall and into this winter month, you'll see that directors and supervisors have been presenting the plan. That we, I, in my first year of superintendency, asked our administrators for a plan. And for this reason, so that they're in tune with the department and the areas that they supervise. And they're able to collect data, now that we're three years into this process on our end, by assessing our areas and collecting data, they're able to speak to you thoroughly and be able to present their needs. And whether it was in the area of curriculum, athletics, activities, and facilities tonight, you can see that these folks have a real good grip on the operations in the areas that they supervise. But also to present to you their needs and be able to prioritize what those needs are. Because overall, we all want to be fiscally responsible. And Mr. Castellano, I think you hit it on the nose when you said, you know, it's our property and we have to take care of it and do some preventive maintenance or address some of the issues now before they could explode into major costly events, all right? So again, I just want to applaud the administrators for embracing the concept and assure you that, do you see how the efforts, the fruits of your efforts, you know, are evident in presentations like this and allows the board to ask you questions. But we were very transparent in the information that you have, and it educates the board. Because when they go into this budgeting process and have to make difficult decisions, they have this data and this information, and I think it's real important. So thank you. I hope you all enjoyed it.
Okay, now, at this point in the meeting, we would normally hear committee reports. Committees have not met yet for 2020, but what? Committees have not met yet for 2020, but what we're gonna do is go through each area and see if our administration has anything to update us on in each of the subject areas, so we'll start with finance and operations.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. Um just two points before we hit the budget, just based on the presentations I just wrote down to speak about. Um the solar on the roofing is why we're looking at other options with this next solar proposal, whether it's gonna be on the field or parking lots, as you see in um canals, for example. Um that's something that you're gonna be looking at specifically because as we go through roof replacements, it'll be a little harder to decide um which panels to go where. Um the second piece was a field replacement. Um I know we've asked several conversations in um central office, and just to put in perspective why Tim said we're looking at the April through August timeline is if it doesn't pass the summer, which barely passed last summer, we won't be able to use a turf for any of the winter sports, for marching band competitions that come up. It'll just be basically unsafe for use until the time comes. Funding-wise, we're looking at blended models, trying to get community investments, trying to get um some grants if possible. Um we're going everywhere to look to see that um the board doesn't have to eat, pay for the whole project, so we'll be, you'll be hearing something more formal, but I want to just leave, say out loud, put y'all notice, that we've talked about it a few times at this level, board level, central office, and now they both have presented it. I just want to close that piece out.
I, I just would like to add to that. Last year, um in or one of my superintendent state of the schools, uh this was shared with the community, and the plans for the fields were shared with the community. In fact, it was the same piece, uh slide, um that we shared back in, in the wintertime. Um and we talked about how we would be able to hopefully someday share with the recreation and the town being all one community and school when it, when it comes to our athletic program. So it's part of the vision, and here we are a year later, seeing it come to life a little bit more.
Okay.
Back to committee report, if you don't mind. I didn't do the committee report, I was just chiming off of that report, and that went to the committee. Okay, thank you. On this agenda, um so normally, um for the community to understand at the work session, um the board gets the agenda the Friday before, um they're able to ask questions um about the specific items they're gonna be voting on, and in finance, some of the questions were related to um the bills list. We had questions, um paying Atlantic Care is for post-employment physicals. Uh once we hire an individual, they have to go through a physical, get a TB shot, and we use Atlantic Care for that service. Um we have tuition payments for specialized schools. Um although they are private schools, we do have to wait for attendance to pay those bills, when that got clarified. Um legal fees, um there was an attorney we used last year that came up on the bills list unexpectedly. It had to do with um a close-out legal letter that had to go to the auditors. Um the architect fees, um when the board approved the vestibule projects or any project, really, there's always an architect-engineer aspect as well as the actual construction aspect. Um GPS on buses, um this is the second year, so a year ago, the 18, 19 school year, we piloted with Verizon, um putting GPS on buses. It's a great feature. We can't afford our entire fleet. They gave us five, um free for the first year, and now it's $95 a month to maintain it. We found it to be of value so that if there is an issue on a specific bus or a specific route, we throw the driver on that bus and then they run on the bus with the GPS just to see what we can do differently for improvement of customer service. Uh 6421 items, there were some um high-ticket items regarding um some things that were on lease purchase, for example, a dump truck in facilities, um some replacement trailers. Uh we have a um, the high school stadium sound system, although that wasn't in a lease purchase, is something that to continue operation and timeliness, um in order for it to be done in time for graduation, it had to be moved forward um in that timeframe. Uh and the last thing was the um touchscreen interactive whiteboards, which was funded through E-rate. Uh the highlight really of the conversation was about our Insight contract, that's on this agenda. We have a contract with Insight um since, I would say, 2016-ish year. Um we are renewing um an addendum to the contract specifically related to having building permanence. Uh in the past, we've had, so with the coverage issues, Insight has provided us with a handful of um daily permanent subs assigned to several buildings, so when there's a last-minute call out and there's a lack of coverage, that building permanent can then fill that last-minute, um is an unassigned person that can fill a last-minute fill. Um there have been a lot more last-minute fills, and the incentive for a staff member, Insight staff member, to be showing up every single day, um not knowing where they're gonna be placed, to incentivize that, we did actually approve the increase of that rate for a building perm on the paraprofessional side as well as the teaching side. Um in addition, uh we spoke to the, um the, Insight spoke to the board about surge days, um working with administration to look at specific patterns in the last three years regarding callouts and um identifying certain days to pay a higher rate um to the employee with a lower administrative fee to kind of help offset, um and see if we can get approved attendance on specific patterned days. Um so that contract is up on the agenda. Um part of that was also over the, um last week, as we're about to take action, Insight was merged with Kelly Staffing, a national company out of New York, publicly traded, huge entity. Insight was very excited that they were identified as a, you know, a company to acquire, or to merge with, rather, and um after speaking with them today, there are, they did tell me at the last week, there's no name change, the contract goes through as um, as normal, and after Dr. Charlton spoke with them today, he did confirm, the gentleman confirmed that it's gonna be still like Insight, maybe with a company of Kelly Company or something like that, but it'll still be identified as Insight serving us locally and just have more resources available for us. That's my report, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Um we are gonna, going to now move on to curriculum. Anything, Mr. Davis, you'd like to update us on?
Yes, good evening. Um on this agenda this month, you'll see a pilot program that is being proposed. Uh currently, we have the seal of by literacy over at the high school, and we were identified by the state, who reached out to Dr. Schiner and requested the EHD to be part of the pilot um to um look at certain, well, there's, I don't know the total number of middle schools, but they wanna actually do several middle schools to pilot this at that level to determine um if it's developmentally appropriate and um if it's worthwhile to do. So we were selected, she already attended an information session, a meeting at the state level in Trenton to find out more details about it, uh and then we found out that we had to actually get a board approved and fill out a form, and then we can be part of the pilot. So we are now going through that process, so you see that on the agenda. Um other than that, we have nothing um to highlight. We will be convening next month and refocusing and going over our goals as a committee and creating and revisiting our norms to kind of set a tone of what we're gonna do moving forward. So I look forward to our February meeting.
Very good, thank you. Um go ahead.
I just, and I may have missed it, but I was just wondering, as far as with our curriculum, like my social studies, we're, and I remember Ms. Hannigan was here a little while ago during a presentation. She is doing the Amishide curriculum.
Yes.
And in far as with the, um I guess, I guess with the status for the LGBT curriculum, we're, I know we're waiting for it.
Great, so we are, we currently have the Holocaust in place, we have the Amishide in place, um we put the Amishide in place for this year, and they did the curriculum writing over the summer, and we bought the resources for that, um for the LGBT, um all the letters.
Yes.
Thank you. Um with that curriculum, um they are um looking at what we have to actually do, so we're gonna be in development a little bit for that, um and that, we found out, was from middle school on up. So, what? I believe so, yeah, so.
It'd be a pilot at this time.
In, in certain locations, yes, so we still have a little bit of time um to review and come up with how we're gonna approach that. But it's gonna be probably approached very similar to how we're doing the Amishide and infuse it into um the overall curriculum.
Um and I'm not sure, I know that, are there some local universities that are offering training for Amishide, from what I understand? Is that Rowan or Glassboro?
Um I have not.
Anybody familiar with?
I haven't seen anything, nothing's come across my desk, but if you have seen it and you wanna pass that along.
Okay.
That'd be a great resource.
I think it's like a free training.
Even better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um we did have our personnel committee meet as a committee, the whole, an executive session. Uh Dr. Charlton, is there anything you'd like to highlight for us or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh what I'd like to highlight beyond our confidential personnel discussions is that we also had the discussion of the spring hiring season coming up, and that's gonna be up upon us quicker than probably any of us anticipate, and we talked about wanting to be a leader in the region in terms of going out early and getting those cream of the crop applicants for our students. So next month in committee, I'm gonna present a timeline uh that I feel is appropriate for your review, so that our principals and supervisors can get out there and get those all-stars for our students.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Castellano, if you don't mind, the, for curriculum, I believe that Mr. Davis and the department needed approvals for action for this particular meeting instead of next meeting. If we can go back and ask for resolution.
Um yes, uh well, what I'll do is I just wanna make sure there's nothing for policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go back, no problem.
And then we'll go ahead and I'll, I'll ask for that motion. Um do, do we have anything that we'd wanna highlight or bring us up to date on policy-wise? I'm gonna ask Mr. Santilli.
So at the current time, we don't have any policy uh for this agenda, however, thank you for sending out the new committee um groups that are gonna be part of policy. We are currently building the agenda right now and look forward to our first meeting in February.
Very good. Okay.
Um just to reference the policy, um we were talking about having our next meeting, um one thing I did share that I wanted to um put on the agenda was the um citizen advisory committee to look at that policy, just to see how that will work and how it will look. Um so that'll be something, I guess, we definitely talk about a policy, but um definitely would open up to some feedback from the board.
Okay, very good. Um so I believe we do have action to take in the curriculum area, and that's the only action we'll be taking tonight, so I'm gonna ask for a motion for 6.1 through 6.3.
Ms. Swan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those three curricular items? Roll call, please.
Mr. Delaparka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stalagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, uh unless there's anything that I'm missing, I think we're ready for uh public comment. Um so public comment will be on uh any topic for three minutes. Um we, uh just as a reminder, normally are not going to be able to discuss matters to do with personnel or litigation, and also, uh should you have a more complex question, we may need to take your name, uh contact information, and have someone get back to you from, from our central office. So with that, um anyone in the public that would like to comment? Oh, okay, going once, I feel like an auctioneer here. Um going twice, okay, I see we have no public comment. Uh I'm gonna ask uh board members, any comment?
Uh, Mr. President, I just have a comment. I wanna confirm um with everybody, this Thursday night, 5:30, the, the board retreat at the high school, if anybody wanted to add to that, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, well, when, as soon as we finish, I, I'll, I will go over that, but yes, thank you. Yes, Mrs. Byrd?
Um I wanna go back real quick, if it's okay, to Insight. Um from December, based on the data we got, it looks like they had a fill rate of 76.5% between teachers and parents, and I think for the amount of markup that we pay them, we should be holding them to the fire a little bit more about filling our positions. They boast on their website that they have 7,743 happy employees, so I think that they should be able to give us some of those employees to fill more of our vacancies.
Um I just wanted to say that, um I was at an event um this Saturday, and I looked over and, and someone said, oh, these students are from Agarboro Township, and I said, oh, really? So the students were there, they were actually working on a project, they're entering into the C-span, um uh they're doing a presentation, and they're, they covered this event, and um they just really sang the praises of the Communications Academy, and they said, they remember they were like one of the first to, to start in a program and how they really loved it, and they were, they really felt like they were like the pioneers. Little girl, she said, well, we're the guinea pigs, but it worked out well. Um it hurt, it was a young man by the name of Tim, and I believe the young lady's name was Nadia, and they were really excited, and they were really, they were super professional, they had their tripod, they had their microphone, and they were interviewing um people at the event, so I just wanted to say it was nice to see EHD students out and about, um taking that extra step, and they were from the Communications Academy. Um and I wanted to say a thank you to Dr. Gucio, who sends us out lengthy emails, you know, each week, and she keeps us all abreast of what's going on in the district. I mean, the good, the bad, and ugly, she makes sure, makes sure that we're informed. And one of the things that she had on her list, um she, you know, she says she forgot some of the things that she wanted to share, well, there was like a list of 12 different things. And I did say to her that I, one thing that, a lot of things stuck out with me, but um the county equity uh meeting in Atlantic City and also the equity steering, and I just wanted to know if Dr. Gucio can kind of talk about how, how is that looking for Agarboro Township? What does, what does all that mean for our district? I know you just say some of the, in the beginning stages of looking at equity, 'cause equity is a passion of mine, so I just wanna know if you could speak to that.
Sure, sure, I, I'd be happy to share. There's, there's a couple of things going on. One, countywide, um I volunteered to sit on two committees, one on the overall equity, climate, and culture uh committee, which we were, on Thursday, we're set to have our second meeting already of the new year, and that's being held at the Stockton Campus in Atlantic City, and that is facilitated by the county superintendent, Mr. Bumpus. And he has readings for us, um he has speakers and videos that, that we watch, and we have conversation about what's going on in our schools. I also sit on the data committee uh for the county, where we look at data um in certain areas, and as a committee, we had to decide, well, that is a big word, and it's vast, and there's huge areas, so which areas are we gonna zone in on, and those areas are gonna be um access, equitable, equitable access um to programs and resources in, in the schools, and also on discipline, all right? So there are two areas countywide that we are creating an action plan so that our colleagues countywide, the other superintendents in other schools, uh could, could look into that. I took it upon myself to present to the administrative staff at our adminis- monthly administrators meeting and kicked it off by saying this is gonna be a series of presentations as we all engage in research of equity. And that began on this past Thursday with about, I guess, about an hour, hour and a half presentation between myself and our special education department, um where, where I kicked it off with, be the leader our children deserve, and started off with defining transformational leadership and what it takes to be a transformational leader, uh in terms of having a sense of responsibility of what needs to be done in your school, being able to be passionate and being able to confront brutal facts. And I think myself as a superintendent and my administrative staff function as transformational leaderships, because, as transformational leaders, because sometimes it takes the courage to, to ask a question, to direct, or to even challenge, or to make change. Change because status quo wasn't addressing um the needs. And nothing punitive in any way, but sometimes change puts a different set of eyes on, on a situation or a building, um in, in our case, and um we, we have had successful results in feedback and changes being made in our district. Um a transformational leader really has clear goals and high expectations and inspires people um to get on the bus to help make that change, all for our students. So I reminded, um and forgive me if I'm going on to one, because I would be glad to stand in front of everyone and present to the board my presentation, um because I reminded our staff that, you know, we call them educational leaders, we call them learning leaders, we now call them transformational leaders, but I charge them, you are responsible as principals of your building and supervisors and directors of your departments, you're responsible for improving student achievement. You're responsible for looking at those student learning goals that we have in place and close achievement gaps. You're responsible for the climate and culture of your building, and you're responsible for building community connections. Because as a transformational leader, they're the ones that are gonna make the improvement, and they're the ones that are gonna help our students achieve and be successful. So I asked, put the words A-L-L, capital A-L-L, on the screen and asked A transformational leader really has clear goals and high expectations and inspires people to get on the bus to help make that change, all for our students. So I reminded, and forgive me if I'm going on too long, because I would be glad to stand in front of everyone and present to the board my presentation, because I reminded our staff that, you know, we call them educational leaders, we call them learning leaders, we now call them transformational leaders. But I charged them, you are responsible as principals of your building and supervisors and directors of your departments. You're responsible for improving student achievement. You're responsible for looking at those student learning goals that we have in place and close achievement gaps. You're responsible for the climate and culture of your building and you're responsible for building community connections. Because as a transformational leader, they're the ones that are going to make the improvement and they're the ones who are going to help our students achieve and be successful. So I asked, put the words A-L-L, capital A-L-L on the screen and asked for my administrators to take the time and work at their tables and define what all means. So we had deep conversation about that. And it was impactful because it's about everyone, how everyone's responsible for everyone to learn, for all to be successful. And we, then I asked them, what does equity mean to them? So there could be a difference. And we watched the video and I'd be glad again to share that video with you, but it's leveling the playing field and realizing that fair isn't always equal. And what, and what are we doing in our schools? What is it, what is going on in our schools? And what it takes is for the administrators, and I charge them, to get to learn about their students in their schools. Do we have labels? Are there tracks and levels? Are there separate environments for students? Do we schedule students so they can have access, fair and equitable access to our programs? Are there interventions in place for all? Do we promote high expectations for all students? Do we view all students as general education students? So every learner, every day is where we are. When we look at this mission statement, do we embrace all? And I asked the principals, do you know every child's name in your school? That'd be tough, Ms. Connor. I know twenty-four hundred kids, but I challenge you. Do you know the neighborhoods that they come from? Do you know if every child is engaged and if they're not, why, why aren't they? And that, the piece from Mr. Pellegrino is able to put statistics up, the question that you asked, who's not involved? Do we educate all? Do we raise the bar and have high expectations for every student because that's social justice? And are we looking to advance equity? So I asked the principals, how do we cha, close the achievement gap because there is, there is a gap? And we're going to do that by looking at data. Now, that data may not be available, but I've, I've directed them to go back and look at their demographics, their discipline, their test scores, their absentee rate for teachers and students, their classroom supports, the interventions that they have. Get in tune with the IRNS team and see what, what students that we're serving and need. Look at your schedules. Who are your struggling students? I can go on and on, but we looked at the demographics of our seventy-three hundred students as of mid-December. And I shared with them and regarding race and the breakdown, we looked at each school, we looked at our district. So I provided some data for them to go, to go by. But we also covered cultural competency and proficiency. And right away, refraining from using the terms subgroups, refraining from using the term those students. Okay? So that has been taken out of our vocabulary and we're trying hard to do that. Then looking at the community, do we know our community? Are we, are we embracing the diversity of this community of the school district and engaging in the rich opportunities that we have available to learn from, to learn from each other and to be able to share. And bottom line, are you available and are you visible? Are you accessible as an administrator? And that goes from the greetings, from when people walk into your building to when folks in your building answer the phone, and the communications that you have with the public. We talked about how to achieve educational equity and making that commitment to all and making that, that you have awareness of the diversity in our schools. And our next steps, we're going to assess the district learning goals and compare how it's school-related. We're going to review our policy procedures and practices for equal access via our, when it comes to our curriculum, our programs and our athletics, et cetera. We're going to scrutinize data findings for disproportionate representation by race, ethnicity, gender, language, economics, disabilities. We're going to collect and share our resources and we're going to create a shared vision that we will at some point share with you, that we have a leadership, a transformational leadership focus on all students. We will create action plans. So this isn't going to happen in February. As I told the administrators and shared with them, it's a process. We'll be talking every month. But I've charged them with taking a closer laser-like focus on their building, get to know every child. Because I asked them to ponder this and I close with this. You can only care for a child when you understand the following. One, what is it like to be a part of a child's culture? Two, what is it like to be unable to speak the language of the classroom that, that you sit in? And three, what is it like to go home to a shelter every night? So I asked them to embrace, to build relationships and understand the interests, passions of our students. What makes our students smile? And what do they wish for if they dared? So I, I leave you with that. Like I said, I'd be glad to share more. It's definitely an exciting endeavor. And I believe the feedback was positive. I don't know, my, my team closed my ears and eyes and you could tell the truth over there. But I know Mr. Davis overseeing the special ed department, if you wouldn't mind just sharing the perspective from that area.
So special ed supervisors have had a viewpoint that they have pretty much been like the, I'll say ugly stepchild of the district, that they only bring problems forward, that they spend all the district money and they're not viewed as part of the district. And that goes from supervisors down to the teachers and so forth. So they felt isolated. They were a little stressed when I asked them if they could put together a little small piece of this presentation. But after they did the work and they presented, they said that was the best feeling and the best moment of their career in EHD because that was the first time that they said, we felt that we were going to be one district and part of the district and that we were going to all view every single child in the district as one. So they really appreciated the opportunity to share their voice and also to educate the staff a little bit more about what is going on with the special ed population and all the work that we're doing from that perspective, as well as the work prior to special ed with the IRNS process. Because one of the key components right now that I think has been missing has been the integration of the CST team with IRNS process and building that bridge for that collaboration between the two because we work hand in hand. You know, students come back to us. We need to create an intervention plan for that student who is transitioned out and, and vice versa. So our programs need to have better alignment for the general education going to a program change as well as going back and forth. So they truly did appreciate the opportunity and they're glad that we are on this movement.
So I just wanted to share that there is work being done in terms of research and staying abreast of the practice that's going out. You know, and educational journals, you know, you know, as an educator, it is, is a topic and we are addressing it head-on. And as, as always, we want to be the best that we can be in, in every area, particularly serving our students and parents. So thank you.
And I just wanted to say thank you because like I said, it is a, it's a passion for me. It, it just is. And you know, I was just, I was having a conversation with my mother and she, you know, she said to me, she said, what was that counselor's name? What was that counselor's name? And I was like, what are you talking about, Mom? And I had, I didn't forget about it, but I hadn't thought about it in a little bit. But I know everybody wants to go home, but this is important because it all talks about embracing and engaging our students. Now, this is, this is a long time ago. This is when I was eighth grade. And I never forget, the school counselors came over to the high school, from the high school, they came down to slay ball when it was in middle school. And I never forget that the teacher, he looked at me and he said, well, you know, based on your CTBS scores. I was like, what's, okay, California, I guess, basis, whatever. He said, you know what? I think you need to take these type of classes. This is, I think this is what you need to do. You should take these. And these were, I guess they were standard classes back then. They were called standard. Then I went on to the high school and my sister saw me go into these particular classes and she was like, why are you in these classes? Why aren't you in college prep? Because I forged my mother's signature. Because the counselor told me this is what I could do based on a test score. And I was like, wow. And then when I got to high school, my counselor, my mother came to the school and said, you know, oh, well, she wants, we want her to take college prep. Well, I don't think that she's college material. And I went to EHD High School. I know I said all-time class of ninety-three. And I, I love my high school. I love EHD, but I do know that, you know, this was years ago. However, you know, I know sometimes students may have similar experiences. So when I say it's something personal, it's, it's real. You know, had I listened or had my mother listened to them, I, you know, I wouldn't be doing what I do today. So I just, we just have to make sure that, like you said, and I'm, it brings, it brings me joy to hear that, you know, we, I saw this equity steering committee and that was countywide. So I was like, great. You know, because sometimes I go to me because she's always beating a dead horse. And that's just something I'm going to always beat as long as I have a voice. So I'm glad to hear about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Any, any other board members, administrators, anything further? Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to give everyone, again, thank you for working with us a little bit as we rescheduled our offsite, which will be this Thursday. We will be at the high school from six to eight. We will have a meal together starting at five-thirty. And I really hope that we will stick to the, those timelines, have a hard stop at, at eight PM. There is an agenda in, in board docs. If, and we will also talk about our committees, our committee structure. If anyone has any other items that they would like added to the agenda, send us an email, just like you would, with comments on our normal agenda, if you could please, by, you know, COB tomorrow, so we have time to take a look at that. So that's what we have. We will see everyone else next week for our business meeting. Board members, we will see you Thursday night for our offsite, five-thirty. And so with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming out.